Of where the breweries where I tutored out of before and so I used that in the spring and that was so nice. Like I could go two mornings a week and do my groups there when the kids weren't in the house. So there was.
Yeah.
It was not fun, but this is, I mean, this is brutal. I don't know how anyone's at home in this because there's no outside even. Yeah.
Yep. Yeah. Yep. Just to be inside and have be able to close the door is a huge, huge privilege today.
Yes.
So the, um, uh, let's see, we have a couple of participants and I know that it's going to take people a while to come in because all the lunches are slightly different.
It's okay.
So we should go ahead and get started.
So I can't go.
Whatever you need to do. And, um, so if you're an attendee, what you can do is you can do a couple of things you can, uh, at any point you can raise your hand. And if I can do that conveniently in the flow of conversation, I will, um, bring you in. Another possibility is that you can put a question in the Q and A and we will take some of those, uh, live. And, uh, we could also answer them in writing and, um, I see a couple of my, uh, union brothers and sisters. And so if you guys would like to join on the screen, you're always welcome to do that.
Your room.
So we'll just get started with questions in a minute. Hey, everybody. So my name's Miriam and I teach at the high school and I am co-political director of the union and I, and so it's my privilege to be able to talk to Veronica Davidson today, who is candidate for school board. And, um, first of all, hey, thank you, thank you, thank you for putting your name in the hat and doing your civic duty and being brave to, um, to get out there. It is actually a huge burden and we appreciate. We really do. Um, I thought maybe you'd like to start by telling us a little bit about your connection to Albany Public Schools. What kind of connections do you have to our schools?
Well, I was, so I was born in Albany, but I didn't go to Albany Public Schools myself. I went to Berkeley Public Schools. Um, so I didn't get to start that early, but when I moved back to Albany, um, in 2008, I was a parent educator at Cornell in a second grade classroom with Shannon Dennis and that made me fall in love with Albany schools. They're amazing. Um, there's, it's still got that small town feel, but there's a lot going on. So I wanted to be back in the schools. That didn't quite work out in the next couple of years. Um, I opened my own tutoring center and during that time I worked with a lot of students in Albany schools at the different levels. Um, okay, come here, Julian. Sorry. My son has a bad cut on his leg and his bandage just fell off. So.
That's totally okay.
A minute, the real life of being a parent with them at home.
We're all there. We're all there.
So I, I did that tutoring and I've supported students in Albany across different grade levels, um, with many different needs and had some wonderful opportunities to meet with different teachers within the district. And then just last year, um, my kids were old enough and it seemed like a great time with our older son starting kindergarten to, um, reapply for the district. And I actually, um, took the first grade teaching position that was Shannon Dennis's for last year. Um, based on how our contracts were presented and worked out and all of the different ways that the FTE shuffling happened. And with distance learning, I didn't go back this year, um, into teaching in the district. I'm a little bit heartbroken about not being a part of it, but I'm the room parent in, uh, my son's first grade classroom with Ellen Murph now. And I'm volunteering a lot as part of that. Um, and I'm still doing some virtual tutoring for students in the district. So all those parts.
Cool. So just for attendees, I just wanted to remind you that you can, um, put questions into the chat. And if you want to join by video and you're a union member, I will welcome that. Um, so my next question was about being in classrooms and what you've learned from that. And of course you've been in classrooms as a parent. It sounds like you've been in classrooms as a tutor and you've also been in classrooms as a teacher. And I guess I'm thinking specifically about Albany, but I'm sort of open to, to, you know, what, what, what's over the takeaways from that classroom I view of public education?
I think I've had a great opportunity because I spent a lot of time in the Berkeley Public School classrooms. Um, my mom was a cooking and nutrition instructor in the Berkeley Public Schools. And so through that I worked with her for, um, the end of my high school and all the way through college when I went to Mills. So I was in Berkeley Public classrooms all through that time. Um, and then when I moved to Santa Barbara, while my husband got his degree, I worked in a private school down there. So I got to see the contrast between public and private education. Um, that was really, really an important step for me because it opened my eyes to where these differences really are and that public education has a lot more challenges. Um, because we're operating sometimes with many more inputs while private still has challenges. There are some areas where, you know, oftentimes the funding isn't as big of a concern or a school can make a decision because it more uniquely just impacts that one school site. Whereas public school is often district wide, bigger, and we're dealing with so many other inputs. So yeah, I've had a lot of experiences in the public school classrooms. Um, yeah. Sorry, I lost my train of thought for a second.
Like to be a parent now in, in, in your child's classroom sometimes.
Oh, I.
An electronic classroom.
It's actually really fun. You know, I was, I was going to ask some of the other teachers if I could pop in and watch some of their Zooms. Um, because I find it really fascinating to watch how people's personalities are in the real world and how they are in the classroom. And I gained so much from watching other teachers. Last year I was fortunate enough to watch four different teachers in action throughout the course of the year. Um, and I would had hoped for more, but we ended school so early. Um, and it's, it's just really, really positive for your own teaching. If you can watch what other people are doing and how they tackle problems and how they interact with students, you'll pick up little engagement tips. One of my favorites, last year I was really struggling with transitions and I went to watch a first grade teacher at Ocean View and she played tricky transition tic tac toe. And the minute we put that in our classroom, it was like magic happened. So I wouldn't have known about that strategy had I not observed another teacher.
I need that one for my high school class.
It's actually pretty easy and fun.
All the best things that I've learned, I've learned from first and second grade and kindergarten teachers, you know, they, they work beautifully with 15 year olds and.
You do. I'm going to be right, right, right back.
No problem. So if you're a guest and you want to add a question, I have a couple more planned, but you're welcome to chime in. Just to give you a heads up, I was going to talk some more about public education, some about unions, about supporting teachers and about the transition to reopening and what kind of things, um, a school board candidate would like to tell us about that. Hey, how are you?
This is Julian.
Hi, Julian.
Julian suffered a broken leg this summer and had a six week long cast time and now has a, has a cut from it, from another part of that on his other leg.
Kind of, kind of, kind of with a saw. Yeah. Sometimes when you get one injury, you get more boo boos right afterwards. I don't know why that is.
You're good. You can tell Ms. Ellen that that's why you were out of the zoom for a minute. Okay. All right. We're good. All right, everyone.
You're a role model.
We're all just hacking it around here, aren't we?
Yeah.
Have some compassion for, more compassion for each other than we ever have before.
Hopefully we need to. Yeah. Um, so you've, you're, you've seen this inside of the classroom. You've seen these different kinds of classrooms in public schools and private schools. It's a deep philosophical question I wanted to ask you, like, what, what are we all doing here? What is the purpose of public education?
So I read through the questions last night and my husband and I looked at that one and we were like, what, what is the purpose? What, what would you really say to this? And I said, for me, it's preparing these young people for what comes next in life and to be successful in all their next steps of life. Um, and that's the academics of it so that they have a strong core of that. But that's also the bigger child picture. There's so much more to these students that we can enrich and we can enhance and we can help create and spark through public education. Um, and the wonderful part of it is that we often get to do that for children who don't have that anywhere else in their life, um, or not as strongly in other parts of their life, being public educators. Yeah.
Cool. Cool. I'd love to hear some comments from my colleagues about that definition of the purpose of public education. So if anyone wants to write a question and/or put something in the chat, do let me know or you can raise your hand and I will acknowledge you even more than that. Um, so because we're playing this important, important role in that you've laid out, the, the job of bringing up a generation and doing that. I think what you're implying in a public way, you know, in a way that's available to every single person who's growing up, trying to make them, give them access to all that they can be as an adult. Um, what do you think it means to support teachers in that? Like candidate, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not asking a question like, do you support teachers? Because all candidates will always say that. So like, what does it mean for you in, in entering into a school board role? If you're elected to, to support the educators who are doing this work and, and not just the classroom teachers, but our counselors, our, our custodial staff, all of those of us who are trying to make this work. What does that look like to support that crew?
I think that we don't hear the voices from the entire crew of, of our educators often enough. Um, I think that we, we hear the voices oftentimes when there's a big spark, but we're not hearing them on, you know, a weekly basis or a day to day basis. We hear a lot from the administration. Um, and that's fine, but I think, uh, I was fortunate enough to know the inner workings of a school site last year and also be a new parent. What I knew as a, as a teacher at the school was so much more than the other parents knew of what was actually going on. And the way that that let me process situations, react to situations was far different than other parents could react. And I think that to really support our teachers, support our staffs, support our students through that is to hear more from everybody, um, and to hear differently, to hear some positives, some calm voices, some of the times that we're really being successful. So through this distance learning, you know, it might be finding a really great snapshot of a Zoom if, and recording it and then sharing that out as part of the newsletter for a school site and saying, hey, we, we caught this in a Zoom. This was really awesome. This is what this teacher is doing. So that we maybe change the narrative to be more positive and then everyone can get behind the teachers. I also, I also think that we can't let the teachers and the staff be made out.
We're having just a little technical difficulty from my end. So I'm just gonna be patient with it.
That's okay.
Little glitch where you've.
Can you go do your dream box for a minute with Nico and then I'll be right in to help you. Okay.
Um, I. For working this through this.
Yeah.
Saying that we can't just.
Well, we, we've, we've had some incidences that I've seen in my little time in this district where it feels like we have a lot of parents keep being petted against teachers or something like that. My problem with that is a lot of our teachers are parents, they're parents in the district. They understand what's really going on as well. Um, and a lot of times there seems to be some sort of, um, place where there's a breakdown in how the conversation is, is playing out. And I think that clearing some of that up, we can really change the feel and change how supported our teachers and our staff feel.
Thank you for saying that. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that, um, just in the same way that it's possible to dwell on the negatives and not see the positives. And we were talking about how to raise up some little positive moments all the time. Um, it's also possible to dwell on the natural conflicts that occur between parents and teachers or parents and staff and not to focus on what we have that we can accomplish together. Like we're, we're natural allies in the same way that we might appear to sometimes be naturally on the opposite side of a fence. And so looking for that as an opportunity and thinking of that on the positive frame is a really important idea. And, um, something else that I heard you mention, uh, was just the appreciation of the whole team. Did you want to say anymore about that?
There's, there's not a lot of times when we acknowledge that every day, you know, we have too few custodians on site and they're still trying to keep everything cleaned. And we don't realize that oftentimes teachers or parents are stepping in to do that little extra bit to have a space ready for kids. There's a lot that goes on in a school day, just like with any business that is behind the scenes. But the problem with telling people, oh, this happens behind the scenes is that leaves it behind the scenes. And so having more transparency and having more, you know, openness about, hey, this is really what goes into it. This is what we did here. This is what we did there. This is how we're supporting here. This is who's doing this job over there. Um, that can really show the collaboration that goes on at a school site anyways. Oftentimes a parent won't know that, hey, today we had the OT and specialist in to observe your child. Today, your child was observed by this person. I also think that with our, um, special education, um, sort of the situations that I've seen play out around that, I think that having more communication around that and, and those teams would take a lot of the stressors off that have been happening lately. Yeah.
Yeah. So some of the stressors that you're talking about, I think are hinting at some of the ways that remote learning has stressed that system. Um, and maybe that also leads to thinking about what we have to prepare for as we transition. Um, so I wanted to ask you about what you think you will undoubtedly, if you're, if elected, you will be in the role of making that transition or continuing that transition from remote learning to whatever comes next. Um, and I find myself saying it in a vague way because it's like super vague, right? What is, what is going to happen? How's this all work out? Where do we go from here? Um, so I don't think we can say where we're going, but what do you see? What are the things that you as a leader would want to see us thinking about as we get there? And starting with remote learning and what we have to think about and then where, what do we, what are the issues we, we need to consider? This is where I would love for my colleagues also to join in and add some.
Please ask me questions. Ask what you really want to know. Um, from what I've seen, what I've seen is it's great that we're doing the remote learning and I think at the higher level it makes more sense. But with the social emotional for our young, young learners especially, and from what I'm witnessing in my own household, my son can get all the work done. We're very lucky because I'm an educator and I know this curriculum already. So I'm not worried about my own kid. Um, I also have our neighbor who comes over and I get to watch his kindergarten zoom a little bit in the yard. Um, I think for the remote learning, we need to look at two things. One, the social emotional for the kids. My first grader cannot stand when he doesn't get called on and he feels so left out. He also doesn't really have a connection with the kids in the class, but just yesterday he had his fifth grade buddy time and he got to chat away with some older students. Um, it was in a breakout room and I've heard a lot of the concerns about that. So I think that utilizing parents who have already had to make the sacrifice to be at home and be around, um, as volunteers could be a really strong thing for these younger grades. Um, then we could supervise a breakout room of five or six kids and do an art activity with them or something. Um, and that could take some of the pressure off a teacher. So that would be one step for the, um, remote learning. The other one, um, I think at the elementary level, that's where I know the most. I'm talking to some middle school and high school parents as well. There have been a lot of different, like technological programs kind of tucked and shoved in there. Um, and it's a little bit overwhelming and confusing, I think, coming out on the parent end. And there's also an expectation that we're just going to know how to use these technologies. So that's a great place for parents to start getting upset and start raising concerns and it's going to come to the teachers first. Um, so I wish that we had had a more unified protocol and a, and a little bit more of a thought process in the spring of, hey, let's look forward to what we can really use and how we're going to roll this out. Um, and then for going into the hybrid, we gotta use our outdoors. Unfortunately, right now that's not an option. So we have to have some contingency plans in place. Um, we need to address the learners that are not getting the support at home. Um, we need to address the ones that aren't getting the social emotional a lot and quickly. Um, those would be my biggest concerns are the, the families that need that help and that support. The academics will come for kids, I believe. I believe we'll get the academics to them. But right now in a, in a crisis, I feel like we've got to focus on our emotional needs and the kids' social and how we look at that going forward.
Cool. So I want to talk about the transition and how you think we should imagine that, but I also want to let, um, my colleague step in. And, um, Chris Knight, do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, yeah. Hi Veronica.
Hi.
So I had a question about, it's actually kind of a totally different topic. So it's kind of about board governance. Um, so those of us who have made a habit of watching school board meetings for a while, um, often find ourselves up late at night, um, and often sometimes see a bit of chaos at those late night hours in those meetings. And I'm aware that right now the board has kind of made it an action item to, um, to come up with, with procedures to make in a more timely manner. Um, but I'm just curious if you had any thoughts on that or, you know, what your thoughts were in terms of how, how to reform or how to, how to make those reforms stay in place, um, so that our board meetings become less circus and, and more functional. Thanks.
Yeah, it's not just our school board. It's our city council too. So I think this is a bigger issue. Um, I was up until 2:00 AM on a city council meeting not too long ago and it was not, not great. Um, and I am a firm believer, you know, I own a bar as well, uh, that nothing good happens after 10:00 PM. So I think that we really need to make that cutoff. We also need to be respectful that many of the people who are part of the board and who are watching the board meetings are educators and parents. So asking people to be up for important decisions that late is, it's really disrespectful. Um, two thoughts I've had on it for a while. One is temporarily we were working that schedule, it seemed around work schedules. Um, so that people could come after work, the board members could do this after work. I think 7:00 PM is quite late to start a meeting. So I would, I would push to start things a little bit earlier. Um, I know that that's going to be a conflict on a lot of schedules, but if the public part could at least start at, you know, six right now, um, that would be fine. I think we can really look at how to move through. Just the last board meeting was Tuesday. They moved through things pretty quickly, but there were not really any largely contentious issues that they got into. Um, and I also, I just think that maybe, maybe, um, all of us, you know, if I get elected as board members could just prepare a little bit more. Just make sure we've really read through what's coming across. Make sure we've, you know, following the Brown Act, uh, had a couple of conversations that we've put a little bit of thought into this. Um, from my interpretation, it seems like a lot blindsides the board in meetings. Um, and I'm surprised by that. I'm really surprised by it. Um, yeah. So, so those are my couple of things. Um, I can't give too many more answers right now because I'm still exploring more of sort of the intricacies, what's going on. Yeah.
Yeah. So Chris is indicating in the chat that he feels like that was a good answer.
Chris, that's a great question that I've been thinking about a lot too.
So maybe we can come back to this question of reopening. I, it's more like, it's more like, what are the things we have to consider? Um, what are the things that, that you would want to be considering as a board member? What are the things you're considering as a member of the community, as a parent, as a former teacher? What are the kind of to do list of things we have to think through to understand what it looks like to move from completely remote to something else or to make the decisions about why that would happen and when that would happen?
I personally don't think that anyone's ready, um, to do that in a comprehensive and completely beneficial manner right now. I feel like we're all, we're all still too raw from the start of school and this all happening. And I think that we need to have a collective deep breath. Um, but I do think we need to set a timeline for when we're looking at this happening. So people can start wrapping their heads around, this will be the next change. Now, we've made a commitment to start out the year this way and that's fine. And then we made a commitment to revisit it on October 6th at the meeting. Um, I would hope that there would be some forward thinking about the next steps at that meeting. Um, and that something would be presented so that we could all start wrapping our heads around, uh, what does really come next? Um, from that, I think there are so many different ideas, but I think that it would help if there were a couple solid plans put forward for what it looks like. I know that there was a task force for reopening, um, already put together. Um, there's, there's just, there's so many concerns. I personally have struggled with needing to meet the needs of all these kids and then the safety and the parent concerns. And I really think that to sort of let people have their own level of comfort in the beginning, when we move to this is going to be the opt-in, opt-out. Um, I think that, I personally think that some families could be okay with some independent study time and some chunks of weeks and then less frequent Zoom check-ins with their teachers while those teachers were allowed to focus on the kids with more intensive needs. Um, so those would be just some of my initial thoughts. I'm a big fan of, you know, outdoor education in any way that we can. And I think greening our schoolyards up, um, getting ready for more time spent outdoors is great. Um, I also think that we, you know, as some of our school sites, we've done a great job of making sure we've got safe air inside. And that's become a bigger conversation. Um, some of our school sites are not there yet and really need that focus. Um, so those are just some, those are small key zoomed in points that I have. Um, looking at the bigger picture, you know, I'm, I'm still processing that. So I'm not going to speak too much on where I stand on it yet because I'm still just observing everything that's going on a little bit longer.
Yeah, yeah. Are there, um, are there? Just trying to, to show each, are, to show the communities or what your thinking process is like. Where do you, how do you gather information when you're making a big decision like this? So what, what kind of sources do you imagine are important to check with?
So I read a lot of the news. Um, I try to make sure I have conversations with many, many different groups and people who represent different groups. Um, so I feel fortunate, you know, I'm connected with a lot of parents. I'm connected with a lot of teachers. I'm connected with some of the, um, political people in our city. Um, and I'm connected with our small business community. So I try to call through and read many, many different sources of information uh, to make sure that I have a, a good frame of reference for decisions that I make. Um, we also, you know, I've been following really carefully what's going on with camps, um, that have been active this whole time and how they've been able to do it fairly safely. Um, yeah, it's a bummer. We've, we've had really terrible leadership from higher up. So it makes it hard at this tiny little level to do what we need to do. Um, and it seems to be constantly changing.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm, I, first of all, I'm active on social media. I read through it. I'm very careful about my input on there and I'm very careful about how seriously I take anything on there. But it's a really good way to keep a pulse on what's going on. Um, so I utilize it for that. It's also a very effective way to share out information. Um, so I definitely utilize it for that. There, there's also so much information coming at people right now that I think encouraging folks to just do what I said, slow down a little bit. Take a pause, take a step back and then really look at what's going on. Um, we need to take a little, so little time to really think some things through right now.
Yeah. That's funny. I hear the, the voice of a, of a Mills graduate, the reflective practice. Tell me, tell me a little bit about, about unions before we run out of time. What, what's your experience with unions?
So I haven't had a lot of experience with unions. I worked with, you know, ATA last year at Cornell a little bit. Um, I think unions have a lot of benefits and I think there are challenges. Um, I, I think they're necessary right now.
Sorry, we had another little technical glitch. It'll come back.
I think the other, the other concern I have, especially I'll, I'll pinpoint in with Albany is, um, I think I've seen again, the, the teachers' union be sort of turned into like the, the bad guys. Oh, well, we don't have our schedule yet because of the union negotiations. Well, that, that villainized the union when that wasn't purely because of, that wasn't the union making that happen. That was poor timing on the part of our, um, district leadership in my, that's my opinion. And so I think that's why I was saying unions, there's, it's very nuanced and there's a lot of challenges. I think what we need to do is. So I think, that's why I was saying unions, there's, it's very nuanced and there's a lot of challenges. I think what we need to do is, again, change the outward perception of, of this union especially. That it's acting for the health and wellbeing of the teachers who then are acting for the health and wellbeing of the kids. Pretty much all it is.
Yeah, we call it the put your own mask on first philosophy.
That's very, very good.
A lot of us are, you know, sort of full out doing everything we possibly can for other people. That's the kind of person who loves this job. But it also, we have to think about ourselves and we have to think about the whole institution and its health. And because that ultimately is what makes things self, safe and healthy for the students, yeah. Good. Is there something you would like folks to know that I have not asked you about? And this is another moment when my colleague might chime in with a question that they would like to hear. But go ahead.
Ask me questions if anyone has them. I feel like I've given you guys plenty of information. Yeah, I, I would, I would be really excited to, to have this opportunity. It's actually something I've wanted to do for a really long time. I tend to be a person who takes on a lot of things at, at one time. And so when this opportunity came up, I actually let go of a couple other things to, not, not just because of this, but it made sense for me to focus in. And so I would really actually be giving this a good amount of my focus right now. I, I feel like it's really important with two young kids and having been an educator. I'm working hard. I have a favorite professor from Mills, well, one of my favorites, Delaine Easton, who was our secretary of education a while back. And I'm working to collaborate a little bit more with her, just on some coaching and some insights for myself. So yeah.
Yeah.
Other things I'm doing to, to help.
Cool.
Yeah.
And I think that I would wrap things up from the point of view of the, of the union and why we're here today. To say that I have never known the Albany Teachers Association to be looking for a new school board candidate to have a particular position on anything. It's, for us, it's, this is not about wanting our, our school board to, to, to pre-commit to certain raises or to some particular plan or just being against something or for something other than public education. But I think what we look for in a, in a candidate is someone who is always talking to us and not in a, not just in a reactive way, but in a proactive way. And keeping the conversation open. If our opinions and our ideas are being listened to and they're diverse and we disagree with each other as, you know, if our opinions and our ideas are being listened to and if our input and expertise is being sought, then, then good decisions will come from that and we won't agree with everybody. And so I, I know that folks are busy today and it's lunch and there's a lot of reasons why we can't ask questions. But we're going to make sure that this video gets accessible to a lot of folks and I appreciate you taking the time to do that.
You guys, one more just on communication and where I stand on that. Because I've been working a lot with the city of Albany recently on getting the outdoor dining for restaurants. It's a lifeline for them right now. And as a dining customer service establishment owner, I know the realities of how hard it is. But working with the city, communication has been one of the hardest parts. And, you know, I've received the call of, will you, why are you compiling an email draft to all the businesses without checking with us first? And I said, well, actually, communication goes two ways. And if you felt like there was a lack of communication on my end, then you can send the reach out email. And I set it up to where just sending a nice, kind check in email every once in a while to our city staff, say, hey, how's it going? Any updates I need to know about? So we don't catch each other off guard. And I think doing things like that and being proactive and then keeping kindness as your top priority will help us to, to keep those communication lines open.
Cool. That's good. I was going to ask you about how the business experience played in. That was a good.
Lots and lots, actually.
So I wanted to let people who are watching this either live or recorded know how to find out more information about you. And one way I'm going to suggest that people do that is, my low tech, I'm going to suggest they go to our union website. And on that website, there is a click through link to Veronica's website. And, and that will help you to reach out to her. And we'd love for you to bookmark this and just check us every once in a while because we try to put some in good information together. And likewise, we will be circulating the video on this on our via our Twitter feed. And so if you want to subscribe to our Twitter feed, then you will always get updates and know what is going on in the minds of the Albany Teachers Association members. But are there other things people should do? And you're an opinion Veronica, to sort of follow the issues and follow what's going on?
I think that those are going to be the best ways to do it. I'm going to be honest, I'm not going to do a big social media push on it at all. Make some posts on Facebook and Instagram, but I think that I want to keep my attention on what's actually important right now. And that's making sure that I have the most information and the most accurate and current information about these issues. Yeah.
Great. And that, that's, that's the best way to run a, a campaign, but we, I should mention that all this, it always takes a little bit of money and a little bit of time to get things going. And so folks should follow up and, and commit a little bit of their time, a little bit of their money to making sure that the best information reaches all the voters. Cool. I think we could wrap this up. What do you think?
Like, it's great. Thank you all for your, taking your time, especially on your lunch breaks. I know how valuable those are.
It was, I was thinking romantically back to the days when I got started in this district and visiting each school site and having lunch with teachers. And I'm glad that we could sort of do that. But that, so this was a little nostalgic, but you know, and almost in a bad way because I wish that we were all together in a room and chatting and that would be fun.
Well, if the air gets better and we can sit distanced at some tables and support our restaurants, I'm happy to meet people out. Y'all see me walking Solano a lot, so please say hi. I usually have my kids and our dog and a whole handful of things, but always stop me and say hi and ask questions. Because I, everyone who knows around town, I'm happy to talk to people. I talk to people all the time. And it's how I hear some of the most important things that I hear in candid conversations. And I really appreciate that I get to have those in Albany and that I live here and I can be so much a part of it.
Cool. It's one of the best things about teaching in Albany too, is that you'll be in the grocery store and kids will try to hand you their homework and.
Well, I shop in Berkeley and we work at the farmer's markets every weekend, so I like to stay out for some parts.
All right. Well, thank you guys for coming. And I'm going to go ahead and end the recording here.